Today is Tuesday, July 2021, 9:00 AM. Welcome to the council meeting of the city of Palm Coast. I'm calling this meeting to an order. Please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Virginia Roca.
Mayor Branquino.
Here.
Councilmember Barbosa.
Here.
Councilmember Danko.
Here.
Councilmember Clufus.
Present.
Mayor, all members are present.
Very good. Item D, public participations. I would like to let the public, the audience, know that you'll have up to three minutes to come to the microphone to speak on matters not on the agenda today. And if you speak at the beginning, you will not speak at the end. Like I've been saying within the last few meetings, we are on campaign season. I appreciate if you come to this podium, do not do anything compared to campaigning. Thank you very much. First speaker. Good morning. Please state your name to the record.
Morning, Courtney McDonald. Remember the old MasterCard commercial with how much things would cost? Well, here's a new one for you to think about. Tennis balls, $10. A new racket, maybe 40. A tennis court, $5 million. A citizen's sleeping, or even better, a citizen's life priceless. How much is a resident's life worth to you? How much is a phone call that says their loved one isn't coming home worth? How much is our safety worth? How much is that officer's life worth? These officers are heroes, neighbors, friends, and family. Our sheriff last week was in the same spot begging for you for a little over $1 million, something that he should not have to do as our sheriff. For what? The cost of saying that Palm Coast has a nice tennis court? So our last mayor thought tennis courts were more important than anything else. But let's think. If we didn't have the number of officers or that officer sitting there, that situation could have been a lot worse. If we don't have the numbers, the number of officers we need on the street when we get into a situation at home or your business, you can walk, you can just wait and wait because an officer is tied up on another call. Or even if you think tennis is more important, you can call a tennis player. Maybe they'll be able to save your life. For me and my house, we back the blue, especially our local deputies, and we will do everything in our power to help our sheriff get more officers on our streets. So now the ball is in your court. Do what you need to do, serve it, and win the match for our safety by getting more officers on the street. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, ma'am. Waiting for you. Go ahead, go ahead. I'm sorry.
That's all right. I'm supposed to smile. Good morning. My name is Robin McDonald. I live in the city of Palm Coast. My good friend Judy Mizelli is from Flagler Volunteer Services and is planning a 5K run on September 25th as a fundraiser for the warriors of Flagler County. The warriors of Flagler County are kids. Remember that word now, kids, that are dying of cancer or who have cancer. There is approximately 25 children currently, right now, in Flagler County that are battling cancer. Judy is thinking about doing the run on that day, but she needs this venue right here, this room, as a cooling center for the kids who either can't be out in the hot sun or need to be in a cool area. So I'm asking the city's permission to use this room. We will supply all of the refreshments to the runners and will clean up after the event. And the hours that would be needed are from 6:00 AM to 11:00 AM. Currently, in the five or six years that I've lived in the city of Palm Coast, four children have died of cancer. Their names will be permanently affixed to these shirts. The worst phone call that a parent can ever get is that their child has cancer. But what's even worse? When the doctor calls them and tells them that their child has now died. No matter how many times you go to church and you pray, and no matter how much money, if we fill this whole building with $100 bills, we can't stop this cancer. But with the city's help, we can do it a little bit because there's no price on how much a child's life is worth. And for those of you that are parents, the worst thing that can happen is that you have to bury your child. Your child is supposed to be buried in us. So please, help us. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. McDonald. Next speaker.
Steve Carr, Palm Coast. For years, we in Palm Coast have faced the ever-growing traffic situation. Okay? And the sheriff has ordered more cars with radar equipment. The sheriff needs more police officers to help control everything. And we bring solutions to the city council that sometimes just seems to fall on deaf ears. Other cities are using traffic common methods sorts like speed humps to curtail the speeding through residential neighborhoods. But Palm Coast is determined to we going to send a police officer over there in his car so that he can monitor that street. We're not going to help the residential areas monitor the speed or control the speed. So the thing about the police officers, they need to be fighting crime. They don't, we appreciate everything they do as far as the speeding goes through residential neighborhoods. But we, the city, needs to help the sheriff department. That's my opinion. Also, the speed hump helps with speeding. It also helps reduce excessive amount of traffic for cut-through traffic. This traffic creates a lot of traffic fumes, traffic dust, and noise in residential neighborhoods. It affects people's health. So when we don't control the traffic through the residential neighborhoods, we're saying, the city council's saying, we're going to determine which residential neighborhood has a good quality of life. We're going to determine which neighborhood has a good environment. That's the way I see it. That's the way I've been here for 10 years, over 10 years, talking about the city traffic problem. And it seems like that just falls on deaf ears. We have a traffic problem. What is it going to look in five years like? Are we going to do anything about it? There are, there are methods out there. You will see more and more cities in the state of Florida turn into traffic common methods that use similar methods as speed humps in their residential neighborhoods to keep that speeding, to keep that access out of the residential neighborhoods. Will our city council join in and protect the residents? Will our city council join in and return the sheriff department to doing more important things in this, the community than chasing speeders through residential neighborhoods? It's your, it's in your ballpark.
Thank you very much, Mr. Carr. Next speaker, please.
Good morning, George Mayo, Palm Coast. A couple of meetings ago, I spoke to you about preemption and what the city is or isn't doing enough to talk to our state reps about how the state keeps wanting to manage us, and it's only getting worse. Well, I've come to learn that there is a New England, excuse me, Northeast Florida Regulatory Council that the county pays for four members to be on. Two are from the county, one is from Benel and one is from Palm Coast. And Palm Coast has not been sending a representative to that. And I'd like to know why or why not. I understand it may be a chore, conflicting with jobs or whatever, but shouldn't we delegate somebody to go up there? They're paying for us to have our voice heard up at the state and give our opinions and maybe ask these questions. What about this preemption? So that's my question there. Another question is everybody's speaking about more police to maintain our roads at supper. What makes me wonder is I was coming home from Daytona with my wife a week ago, and they are sitting on the side of the road at the weigh station northbound on I-95 with the sheriff's deputy in a Mustang with radar. Now, are we paying, going to pay for sheriffs to take care of the crime in our city? Or are we going to pay for them to sit out on I-95 and look for speeders as a money trap? It wasn't but a couple of summers ago, there was a small central Florida town, city, that became known for its speeders. And Travel Advisor went out nationally. It was in USA Today. It made national news telling everybody, stay away from this town. Don't go through it. Don't stop in it because you're going to get a ticket. And if that's all we're concerned about is speeding here for, with our officers, are we going to get that moniker? You know, watch out for Palm Coast because you're going to get a speeding ticket? I just wonder. I just want to look carefully at what we spend our money on. The sheriff has the duty. He says he doesn't require so many tickets. It's up to the deputies. But if we get that, that name, is it going to deter people from coming to Palm Coast? One other thing was a couple of months ago, I called up the city for Public Works. The red blind strips that they put on intersections for the people crossing the intersections was missing over by my house. And they had just put it in. So I called them up and I said, if you come quick, you could glue it back down. Nothing happened. Not only did that one come up, then another one came up. I called three weeks later. They never came out to fix it. Now they're all gone. I came in to pay my utility bill one day, and I went over to the office and I said, gee, I called up. And the response was, yeah, they're trying not to take phone calls anymore. So I tried to get on Palm Coast Connect. Didn't really, I couldn't connect. I couldn't leave anything about it. I come in here in person, I talk in person, and got no response. To this day, it hasn't been fixed.
Thank you, sir.
So I was told phone calls work, but obviously they don't.
Thank you, George.
Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Good morning. I'm Dan Christensen. I recently moved to Palm Coast. I live on Crossleaf Road here in Palm Coast, and I'm a very active biker, walker. I have grandchildren that live in the, in the surrounding area. I'm talking about the Cimarron issue without having a sidewalk on it. It's probably, we've been talking about it for a while. We really need to have something done with it. We do appreciate that their signs have been put up and there's been a monitor to see how fast people are going and education in the area. But the thing we really need to do is get a sidewalk or some kind of a pathway along the road. There's a lot of areas in the town I've noticed that do have sidewalks along the areas that are really busy. My grandkids, now we don't have them drive on Cimarron anymore because I drive up and down with my car and also my bike. And it's very scary. A lot of times cars will be passing. They pass me on my, on my left, and then there's another car coming on and trucks stop and park there. And it's really starting to become a real problem with more development going on, of course, at the sanctuary, at the end of the road, and a lot more people, of course, are moving into the area. So just want to keep bringing it back up to the public, meetings like this, that there definitely needs to be something done. This kind of is a personal issue to me because I moved from California. We had a situation in our town that we went to the council meetings and we said, please, we need more sidewalks in this particular area. They didn't do it. They took years to do it. And some child was riding their bike and they got run over. The city was very upset about it. They sent flowers to the family. The city got sued, and so it was a real ugly situation. So we just don't want to repeat what I saw personally happen out in California, happen in my little town here. So appreciate anything, anything you can do to help the situation move faster along. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Daniel. Thank you. Next speaker, please. Set your name to the record, please.
Janet Jennings. I am here regarding safety on Cimarron as well. But just a few thoughts. I've been here 39 years, living on Chippewa Court, 39 years. And so I've seen a lot. I've seen it change a lot. We were the second house on our street. Okay? So Cimarron had maybe three houses on it, and now it's a full block of, of houses. So there's a lot more traffic. I am a walker and I did ride my bike. I don't ride anymore because it scares me to ride on Cimarron. So that's the only way. I used to go to Flagler Beach on my bike, but I can't do that because then the road is narrow. And also, there's, there are places where it drops off. And so if a car is coming, I'm going to get nervous, which of course, but if there's not room, I'm afraid I'll, you know, fall off or my bike, my tire will go off the edge. And I don't really want to do that either. So it's kind of made me too nervous to ride my bike on Cimarron or even around the area. But even walking one time, and this is like something that happened that startled me because I'm walking facing traffic the way I'm supposed to. And a car, I'm thinking, I'm okay, okay? I'm facing traffic and I don't see anything. But there was a car coming over here and someone decided that they wanted to go faster past them, so came on my side and startled me because it's like, oh, my gosh, there's a car right here. So I always step off. I mean, this morning I walked it because I wanted to see the signs from the, from the ground. And I had stepped off every time there was a car coming. Either way, I step off. But I want to thank you for taking action because so many times I think people come up and nothing really gets done, but you have taken action and it is so appreciated. Those signs are great. They really are. That being said, I didn't notice them because I'm so used to driving and, you know, everything is a blur. So I don't really, didn't really see them. But when I looked for them, I thought, these are great. They're great signs. But maybe at night, they're wonderful. They're reflective. But in the day, they don't really capture your eye. I didn't know whether possibly like flashing lights could be attached to them to just make you look and think a little bit more. So it's just a thought. Ultimately, I know that we need to widen the road some and ultimately we maybe just like a bike path or something to make the road a little wider, even when you're driving with the trucks that stop, you can just stop anywhere, as you know, and put a cone out. And that's okay. And but then that makes it even more complicated, as Dan was saying, if you're walking or whatever. So it's just a very busy street now. But we appreciate what you've done and we thank you for considering our requests. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jennings. Next speaker.
James Vincent. This is a culmination of-
What was the name? I'm sorry.
James Vincent. This is a culmination of the last six months' analysis of meetings here. I realize we're no longer primarily a retirement community. You have more working families. And those I've spoken to express an interest in attending meetings that aren't able to do so during the day. Danny's kind of a little exception, but I know there's a late turnout. A motion was brought up several times to have at least two of the meetings at nighttime so more people can attend. And that was ignored. Also, possibly topics, I'm sorry. Have the topics repeated at more than one meeting so more people can have a chance to respond to them instead of just one time. Likewise, it seems hot issues are presented during the daytime when there's a late turnout. And these are pushed with no opposition. Example is just recently the half-cent sales tax. Now we're going to be discussing the mileage increase. These are hot issues and, and they should be brought up to people at night that they can have a chance to respond to them. Plus the fact that these two issues should not even be voted on now because you don't have enough people. You have a split vote at best. You need the fifth person here. You have to wait till the mayor comes in and help give us a little bit of balance there. Several months ago, a motion was made to gather information to possible corruption in our government, and no one seconded it. That sends a message to me that there is corruption and you don't care and don't want to deal with it. We have enough corruption going on around through our country and find it sad to be dealing with it in our own town. This needs to be looked into because I know there is corruption in our government, especially in light of the two recent resignations. The motion to prioritize the spending for the parks and recreation, that's, that was shot down several times. No motion was made to it. But somehow the, the tennis stadium was brought up to the top of the list. Well, I wonder why. Well, pictures circulated here, Clufus and Holland holding their football paddles. They have a personal interest. They have a personal, you know, they, they like it. So they should have been recused from, from voting on that issue. And that should have been held off because there was a motion made to put, get more information on how to get that through a different way. It should be go through private corporation, not have the taxpayers pay for it because you're going to have millions of gallons of water being wasted that you're not going to collect revenue from on it. It should be a private corporation do this. That way we can collect taxes from the corporations and collect the money, revenue from the, from water. So that should be done there. And, you know, with that money, forget that stadium. We need to have that money put towards repaving our roads, retrenching swales, street lighting and such. More people are moving in this town. If you try to drive across town from Bel Air, across Parkway to Clubhouse, or even 100 from Bel Air to Old Kings, it's a backup. We need to have these roads increased tremendously. So this all needs to be addressed. That money needs to be spent wisely and not on stupid things like the tennis court. Let private people take care of it, not the city, not the taxpayers.
Thanks for your comments, Mr. Vincent. Next speaker.
Morning.
Want to set your name to the record, please, sir?
Mark Lewis, Palm Coast, Cottonwood Court. I'm against the mileage rate increase. In a recent discussion with the Flagler County-
Excuse me. That's on, that's on the agenda today. Please do not speak about that. Sorry. Thank you. Next speaker. Hearing none, I'm going to bring it back to this day. I would like to start with Mr. James Vincent, which was the last one. Mr. Vincent, you brought up a good few points. But one, it's dear to me. You said you know there's corruption. I would like for you to stay at the end of this meeting. Approach me and we'll go straight to the sheriff's office. And from there, we'll take it to the proper place to say where you found corruption because I need to know. I need to fight it. And the only way I could fight it is people like you who comes and accuse are ready to accuse in the proper places. So therefore, if you be so kind and wait until the end, and we'll go straight to the sheriffs and they'll guide us on where to go because you, I'm pretty sure you're not lying about it. You know where the corruption is because you just said it. Tell us where the corruption is. Thank you. Janet Jenkins, Dan Christians. We are, as you know, looking at Cimarron. We're not ignoring it. I'm pretty sure you've seen some improvement. We're not done with everything we want, but I'm pretty sure that with the city manager, I don't know if you, have you met after the last meeting you had, which was about three, four weeks ago? Well, I don't know if you ever met with him or was just the prior city manager that met with the-
That's correct. I have not directly engaged the neighborhood of Cimarron, but I have spoke to representatives.
Very good. That's it. That's, that was my main thing. So we did not forget you. Okay. Mr. George Mayo. Can we start sending someone to that Northeast council?
I do have some background on that if I could.
Absolutely.
Mayor. The Northeast Florida Regional Council is actually established by Florida statutes. There's 10 councils across the state of Florida. And their board is actually represented by elected officials. There's 35 member board of directors for the Northeast Florida Regional Council. Flagler County and the six other counties are represented by board members appointed to that position. And I personally am on the Regional Community Institute, which is a recommending body to the Northeast Florida Regional Council. And I've served as a task force member on their resiliency program specific to COVID. And I know many of our other staff actively engage the council as well.
Thank you. Thank you. Coming still back to George Mayo. George, if I may. If, if what you think it's a money trap, sometimes, and most of the times, police officers are there for a reason. It's called safety. What you see as a money trap, it's your safety. And I could talk to you. I have the authority to talk about it because I did it for 26 years. I'm not saying that they're always looking for your safety, but 99.999% of the times, they, they are there for a specific reason. It's because of speeders or other people that abuses a specific location. And that's what they do. As to you calling Public Works and they said that they're not taking calls anymore. Mr. Mansell, you have an answer for that, please, sir? Okay.
Hi, Cynthia Schwerz, Director of Citizen Engagement. The Call Center handles the calls for Public Works. So I'll get with the resident afterwards and get the information.
With your gun?
Yep, absolutely.
Appreciate it. Steve Carr, my friend. You're talking about that we need to speed humps. I think that's one of the things that if you do that in your street, you're going to have a problem with the rest of the neighbors. Because the street I live, it's just as bad as yours. It's called Eric Drive. And I invite you to go check it. And I don't think the speed bumps would help. And you don't think that the sheriffs should be, you know, actually there to, for the speeders? It should be fighting crime. Police officers do all of that. Fight crime and control traffic. That's part of their jobs and they don't deny doing it. They'll do it the minute it's needed. Okay. Bob McDonald. If it's up to me, my friend, there you go. I like that smile. If it's up to me, you will have the whole day here to help the kids. If it's up to me. I would have had to see what it takes. Does it involve insurance or does it involve whatever it takes? Would you please, Ms. Heaven, speak with Mr. Bob-
Absolutely.
Regarding that? Thank you. At the end. And Courtney McDonald. Even though, I don't know if I can see her. There you go. Even though sometimes police are treated like tennis balls because they get pushed here, pushed there, pushed the other. It reminds me of baseball. But one thing has nothing to do with the other. Contrary to what a lot of people have been saying out there to that, the tennis project or the pickleball project that's being known for, out of the $5.7 million, only 16% will be going out of the general fund. The rest cannot be spent on law enforcement. If they could, would agree with you 100%. And if you need a little more explanation about that, I'll gladly give it to you right now. But the only thing I could tell you, only 16%, I believe it's 16, if I'm not mistaken, 16% of that total project will come out of the general fund. And they cannot be used. The rest of the fees and all of that will not be able to be invested on the sheriffs. The rest of the fees and all of that will not be able to be invested on the sheriffs. Because if anybody in this day is here, and I respect my friends who like the law enforcement, I feel more than anybody else because I've been on their skin. I had a uniform for too long. Okay? And it was a town that, it was a little harder on crime. But remember, and I keep on saying this, it don't matter where you're a cop at. Could be the easiest town in the world, but every time you put a uniform on, you have a target on your back. You become a target for every knucklehead out there. So I respect them, and there's very little I wouldn't do for them as long as that's legal and ethical. Thank you all. Continuing. We will go onto the presentations.
Minutes.
Minutes. Approval of minutes.
Oh, I'm sorry, the minutes. Skip the minutes, huh? Look at that, huh? All right. Minutes for July 6th. Business meeting, July 13, 2021. I'll introduce a motion.
Yep. I will move to approve the minutes.
Second, roll call for this. Do we need a roll call? We don't need a roll call. That's approved. Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
All in favor.
All right. We got the presentation. Right now, we have a presentation on the COVID updates.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Last week, Mayor Rankino requested an update on the COVID-19 public health crisis and the new Delta variant. After speaking with our partners at the Flagler County Health Department, I wanted to provide you with some data. First, we do have the Delta variant in Flagler County. As of yesterday, there were four known cases. However, the Delta variant is not the predominant strain in Flagler or Florida today, although it is in some states in the United States. Although there is still much to learn about the Delta variant, the data does show it to be a 50% more contagious strain of the coronavirus. The data also shows that the vaccines are effective against the Delta variant, providing significant protection from both symptomatic disease and hospitalizations. However, Florida and Flagler County are experiencing a surge in coronavirus. Two weeks ago, Flagler County had 88 new cases. Last week, Flagler County had 240 new cases. There are currently 18 coronavirus hospitalizations at Advent Palm Coast. These are numbers we haven't experienced since December. And I also wanted to note that none of the hospitalized individuals were vaccinated, and the average age in the hospital is 40, which is lower than we were seeing during the height of the pandemic. Vaccinations continue to be available through the Flagler County Health Department and at all local pharmacies.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Any questions regarding this subject matter from my colleagues? Any questions? All right. Thank you for your presentations again.
I have one.
Excuse me, ma'am. Regarding this matter? You know what?
Where?
I'll, I'll, come on. I'll allow you to speak on this. What is your name, ma'am?
Paula Lewis. I'm on Cottonwood Court. Where can we find those statistics? I looked online, and I can't find the statistics for our county. There are a bunch of different websites, but nobody has accurate, accurate information.
So the Flagler County Health Department is continuing to collect the data for the pandemic. We have transitioned from a declared state of emergency, which is why you're not seeing Captain Escone today, to a public health crisis. So we're managing it that way. My understanding is that the data is being through the public, through the Flagler County Health Department, and that data is transmitted to the state. And so, you know, with public health data, there is some privacy issues and some things of that nature. But some of the things that were in place at the emergency, declared emergency stage of the pandemic are no longer, such as the county website having the dashboards and some of those things. But there is still data at the state site, and I can try and get with her and give her some access to where that comes from.
Would you please?
Okay, but yes, sir. We got our data through the Flagler County Health Department.
Thank you. Hope that answered your question, ma'am? And thank you for caring.
Yes.
All right. Now, anybody else want to speak regarding this matter? Hearing none, moving resolution sheet. Number three ordinance.
Mr. Mayor, Council, this is an ordinance of the City of Palm Coast, Florida, officially renaming or redesignating certain street segments. Renaming a segment of Citation Parkway between Sesame Boulevard and Seminole Woods Boulevard, being renamed Sesame Boulevard. Graphically depicted in exhibit H to the ordinance and providing for an updated and distribution of the city map. This ordinance also provides for replacement of the affected street signs for conflict severability and for an effective date. Mr. Mayor and Council, this is the second reading of this ordinance. There have been no changes, and the purpose of this is described in the transmittal memorandum. The staff is available for any questions, should you have any.
Any of my colleagues have any question regarding this since last workshop?
Nope.
Anyone in the public who would like to comment on this or question? Hearing none. I'll bring it back over here, and I'll introduce a motion.
I will move to approve the ordinance, renaming the road segment of Citation Parkway currently between Sesame Boulevard and Seminole Woods to Sesame Boulevard.
I'll second it.
All those who have ever say aye?
Aye.
Those against?
Four zero pass.
Okay. G four. Mr. Richmond.
Mr. Mayor, this is a resolution of the City of Palm Coast, Flagler County, Florida, setting a proposed maximum ad valorem millage rate and tentative budget hearing date and location for the City of Palm Coast, Flagler County, Florida for the fiscal year 2021 and 2022. And this resolution provides for an effective date.
Here. Ms. Bevan, shall we go straight to Ms. Alves, or you guys on?
No, that's fine. Just wanted to make recognition that we took in the input from council at the last presentation at workshop. And so we've updated the presentation, and our team here will guide you through those updates. And if you have any questions, of course, I'm here to answer those as well.
Let's hear the updates, please.
Good morning, Mayor and City Council. Helena and I are here to talk to you today about the general fund budget and the maximum millage rate proposal. Again, we will start with a quick review of the budget timeline. As you remember, the process started in March with workshops to review survey results as well as the annual financial audit. We covered the year-to-date budget results in April and have reviewed fund accounting, revenue restrictions, as well as property tax. As you can see during July and August, you will have many opportunities to review the budget where you can ask questions and go through the budget process. Today, we will review the trim timeline, the fiscal year 2022 maximum millage rate proposal, proposed personnel changes, as well as the general fund revenues and expenditures, and the maximum millage rate recommendation. So this is a look at the trim timeline. On June 1st, the property appraiser provided a total assessed value of non-exempt property. The City of Palm Coast received an estimate of $6.2 billion, an increase of 6.55% from the previous year. On July 1st, the property appraiser certified the taxable value at $6.4 billion, a 10% increase. Within 35 days, the value certification, the current year proposed maximum millage rate must be set. Today, we will present the general fund budget with the options to set the maximum millage. As a reminder, the assessed millage can be reduced but cannot be increased after this point. We will come to you July 20th, which is today, with the proposed maximum millage rate. So the first public hearing will be on September 9th at 5:30 PM. We will advertise the trim notice that the property appraiser sends out. This hearing will set the tentative budget and tentative millage rate. The final public hearing will happen on September 22nd at 5:30 PM to adopt the final budget and millage rate. The budget presented to you today is proposing the same millage rate that has been adopted since 2019 of 4.6989. This is an overview of the general fund positions, a total increase of 13 full-time new staff positions, and 2.1 part-time seasonal positions are being requested for fiscal year 2022.
I'm sorry, how many part-time?
2.1.
2.1?
It's seasonal part-time FTEs. The change in the streets maintenance is due to moving seven positions for facilities mowing to the facilities fund for fiscal year 2022. Since your 7/13 presentation, we were able to add 1.75 FTEs to the park and recreation budget. As we review each department budget, we will go into further detail on the positions requested. Helena will now review the general fund revenues and expenditures. Thank you. So this is a big-picture view of the general fund revenues. Overall, the change at approximately $2 million. We're not going to go through every one of these revenue lines. However, we do want to point out some of the most significant sources. As you can see, the ad valorem is the largest revenue source for the general fund. The city's assessed value has increased by 10% with approximately 4.3% attributable to new construction. So assuming the same millage rate from last year, we would generate an additional $2.8 million in ad valorem revenues. The next largest category includes the state revenues that the city receives. So since your July 13th presentation, we received updated estimates from the state for the two revenues that are highlighted on this slide. The state is projecting $3.3 million for the half-cent sales tax and 1.4 for state revenue sharing. This has added approximately $550,000 to the general fund revenues. We are still currently waiting for state estimates on the communication services tax. But, you know, looking at history, that is usually a very conservative increase every year. You will notice a decrease in appropriated fund balance for, in fiscal year 2021, council approved one-time use of general fund fund balance for the MEDNEX initiative. For fiscal year 22, we are requesting to use $650,000 for the purpose of contingency to handle fluctuations in revenues and expenditures as we have in the past. So we're going to move on to the general fund expenditures. Council should have received supporting worksheets with detailed line item budgetary requests. These are also on our city website for the public under the fiscal year 2022 budget preparation tile. Now, we'll go through each department individually, but the directors are here to answer any questions that council may have regarding their budgets. We will start with city council. There is a decrease of, in this fund, mainly due to operating expenditures, a decrease in subscriptions and travel. The city manager's budget is decreasing by .1. That is mainly due to a position transfer from, to the communications and marketing division. The fiscal year 2021 estimated is increasing from the original budget, and that is mainly due to the payment associated with the leaving of the former city manager. We will move on to the city clerk's budget. That one is decreasing by 4.4%. And that is mainly due to a position transfer to the information technology internal services fund. The city attorney budget is increasing by 5.6%. That is mainly due to increase in regular salaries and CPI increase to the city attorney's contract. Now, for fiscal year 2021 estimated, has increased from the original budget due to professional services contracted by the city. Our communications and marketing budget is increasing by approximately 20.4%. That is mainly due to the position that was transferred from the city manager's budget as well as restructuring of the division. Economic development budget is decreasing by 5.2%. Now, there are several factors contributing to this decrease. There are currently three positions budgeted in this division. Two are unfilled and are only budgeted for six months in fiscal year 2022. You will also notice an increase in economic development special projects to account for several council priorities. The human resources budget is increasing by 21.5%. And that is mainly due to a new position requested for risk and benefits management. Financial services budget is increasing by 10%. And that's mainly due to a new position requested for handling day-to-day transacting. That takes care of our administrative department. So I'll turn it over to Gwen, and she'll review the balance of the general fund department. Construction management and engineering budget is increasing by 21.9% mainly due to a new position requested for a senior project manager. The planning budget is increasing by 7.5% mainly due to the request of a new planning technician to meet the level of service. Code enforcement budget is increasing by 5.2%. Also, the code enforcement supervisor is being split currently at 50/50 with building, and the request is to change it to a 35/65 split to reflect the current workload. The fire department budget is increasing by 10.1% due to three new firefighter EMT positions. The operations side is increasing due to fleet and equipment replacements and for internal services that were being charged to non-departmental and now are being moved to the fire department who is receiving the services. The Flagler County Sheriff's contract original budget was at $4,659,602 with 33 deputies. The sheriff's original request was for 10 deputies. Since updating the state revenues and decreasing the contractual increase from 5% to 3.5%, we were able to accommodate adding six of the 10 requested deputies for a total budget of $5,279,200. We have additional millage proposal review slides later in the presentation. Street maintenance budget has decreased. While they requested two new FTEs, a signal technician and a maintenance technician, they are moving seven FTEs for facility mowing to the internal services facilities fund. Parks and recreation budget is increasing 13.9% due to seasonal part-time recreation leader and additional youth programs. The aquatic center is increasing by 7.9%. The tennis center is increasing by 5.2%. And the tennis tournament will not be held in fiscal year 2022, so reducing the cost from the previous year. The Palm Harbor Golf Club is increasing 14.5%. Since your presentation on 7/13, we added a recreational specialist and a seasonal part-time cart attendant starter. The parks maintenance budget is increasing 25.3% due to adding two new FTEs, a maintenance worker, and an equipment operator, too. There is also an additional addition of new fleet and IT equipment. We will now cover the non-departmental budget for the general fund. As you can see, the non-departmental budget is changing significantly. The UNFJU initiatives are expected to be completed by September 30th. They are not expected to carry over into fiscal year 2022. We are requesting the contingency of $650,000 for the purpose of handling fluctuations in revenues and expenditures. And we are also proposing a transfer of $550,000 to the streets improvement fund to help with the shortage in the pavement program. In the fiscal year 2021 estimated budget, we are proposing a transfer to the IT operations fund to fund critical upgrades to the current ERP. The increase in expenditures in fiscal year 2021 is mainly due to online payment processing fees and the special election. I will now turn over the presentation to Helena, and she will go over the trim and millage. Thank you, Gwen. This is a look at how a dollar is spent between the taxing agencies. So for every dollar in ad valorem tax you pay, Flagler County receives approximately 41 cents, the school board 32 cents, the City of Palm Coast receives 23 cents, and the other taxing districts split the remainder 4 cents. Taking a look here at the history of the last five years for millage rate, property values, receipts collected, and population. As you can see, the millage rate has stayed the same since 2019. Our property values continue to experience healthy growth. The chart has been updated since your 7/13 presentation. To include fiscal year 2022, we had property value increase of 10.22%.
We had property value increase of 10.22% and estimated population per our community development department were at 94,000. We'll now take a look at your millage options. So we are required to go through every one of the options with you. So the proposed fiscal year 2022 rate is the same at 4.6989. Your rollback rate is 4.4593. Your majority vote is 6.3365 and a two-third vote would be 6.9702. The proposed millage rate is 4.6989 and would be set today for adoption. Now, we want to remind council that you are approving the maximum millage rate. The rate can be reduced as we proceed with the budget process, but it cannot be increased beyond the rate that you established today. We'll go over some of the items that are not currently funded. As Gwen mentioned earlier in the presentation, the Flagler County Sheriff's Office has presented a request for additional 10 deputies to support the enhanced law enforcement contract. We included an increase of six deputies at the current millage rate, leaving four deputies at 114,000 each. The four additional deputies would have a cost of approximately 456,000. The city departments have additional staff requests that were not included in the budget numbers that were presented to you today. That totals approximately 615,000. Those requests include four FTEs and equipment for the streets department, three FTEs and equipment for the parks and recreation department, and one FTE for financial services. The city's street pavement program also has a shortfall of approximately 1 million and that is beyond the transfer of 550 that we're proposing from the general fund. This is a look at millage rate options to fund the items currently not included in the budget numbers that were presented today. The cost below would be on a homestead or property that has a taxable value of 100,000. The cost for four deputies would increase the millage approximately .0737 or an additional For the additional city staff request, increase of the millage would be approximately .0995 or $9.95. An additional million to fund the streets pavement program would account for an increase of approximately .1616 or $16.16. The total estimated increase to a homestead or property would be $47.17. The total for the items above is 33.48. The difference of approximately $14 is the increase resulting from the increase in property values.
Elena, just out of curiosity and to clear people, this is annually? This increase 33, 48 is annually?
Yes, that is correct on your annual property taxes.
For a home valued at what?
A taxable value of 100,000. We need council's guidance in order to prepare the resolution to send to the property appraiser's office with the proposed millage rate.
Does that conclude your presentation?
Yes, we'll take some questions from council.
I'll bring it to the council.
I'd just like to thank you for the extensive information that you provided us without throughout this process has been an ever-evolving, you know, fluid situation with the different numbers we've been getting from the state. If you could explain the process just a little bit more so we're all familiar with what setting the maximum millage rate actually does. In my experience, it's kind of put in place essentially to try to create a an easy way for the financial departments and municipalities to be able to pair different levels of budget to be able to present to our council. So by setting a maximum millage rate, what we should expect as a council and which you very much have done so immediately, if we were to propose a higher millage rate than what is currently set, then we would expect to have things budgeted like you had in that last slide where for the additional $34, we get the additional deputies and the additional million-dollar maintenance of street maintenance. So we have the ability to look at the different tax rates that we can potentially lock in in the future and as representatives of our city be able to go to our residents and say, for this millage tax rate, this is what you're going to get and these are the other options and receive input input back from the public on on what we should do. I just thank you for the presentation. This slide particularly makes it very easy to digest where if we need an additional four deputies and that's what the public wants, we're going to have to find that money somewhere with our current budget unless we can isolate out a line item that would replace the equivalent of the additional millage rate, then we this is what's going to be due at the end of the day. So I think this is a very powerful slide and I think as a council, this gives us the ability to go talk to our constituents, tell them currently this is what we're funded at, but here are the things that we need as a city. If we want to maintain our streets to the level of service that we have today, we need additional funds. We're falling behind in that in that situation, but I thank you for all of this information. It's great and I hope as a council, we can digest it and talk about it.
Leave that slide there before we unless you choose another slide to talk about.
I just had one question. You said we had 13 new hires included and 2.1 part-time hires.
Yes, that is correct.
And what is the total cost of that?
That was approximately 750,000, I want to say.
750,000?
Including, yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any questions regarding the budget over here?
Oh, I had one other, I'm sorry. The minimum millage rate. I mean, you have a maximum and a minimum.
4.5 something.
4. something or other?
4.4593.
Does that mean we can't go below that minimum?
You, but the the rate you set today, you can go below that, but you can't go higher.
But we could go below the minimum rate that you're throwing up there. We could go anywhere we want. Is that correct?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I would like to bring this to the public comments.
Morning, Mayor, council members. I'm Chief Mark Strobridge. I'm the chief of staff of Flagler County Sheriff's Office. Sheriff Rick Staley could be here because of a prior commitment, but what I wanted to say is that we've been very working very closely with the interim city manager and her staff and we've done a great job. We have been able to come up and have progress in finding funding for the six deputy positions for full year without changing the millage rate. And just to be clear, Sheriff Staley does not, does not recommend a millage increase to support law enforcement. Law enforcement is a core service, public safety is a core service of government. It shouldn't be the afterthought or funding from that additional millage rate. That would be always increasing that on the backs of public safety, which is your core function. In fact, we believe the funding is available within the current millage rate. The estimates provided for public safety components are a priority, as you said, they are a priority for government. Since the inception of the city, the sheriff's office has not been considered as part of the regular budgeting process, but more of an afterthought. So we had to come in at the last minute and talk about these issues with the city staff and council members to try to educate and explain what's going on. We've made multiple requests with the past city manager to discuss these issues well before the budgeting process start. However, that always, always fell on deaf ears. And we believe the funding is available based on our involvement with government budgetings for the past 30 years. For example, your your reserve fund is over 20%. Optimum is probably 17%. City policy is 10%. There may be funding there to go ahead and fund those four additional deputies within that. And I fully understand that having a good, strong reserve helps with these cities' credit ratings and such to be able to do these other projects, but there are probably other areas that could be cut to. The city manager and her staff, her professional team that she's put together has invited us to start this process next year at its inception, not waiting to the last minute to come in here and speak about these issues. And we're going to build a comprehensive plan together to be able to use our studies that we have in the past to bring forth to the city. With that, we believe that it can be funded and if we keep funding and approving growth within our community, we're going to be further and further behind. So we ask that you consider our request from Flagler County Sheriff's Office and direct your staff to include law enforcement as a public safety core funding source versus the afterthought. Thank you.
Mr. Strobridge, if you want to continue, I'll consider this part of the presentation. If you want anything to add, I'll give you the time.
The only other thing I would want to add with that across this country, you know, 70% of the governments are now increasing funding for their public safety and public safety's law enforcement, fire and emergency medical services, they need to be funded as a core product of government, not as a secondary afterthought. So it shouldn't be on the backs of law enforcement or public safety that we raised the millage rate.
Thank you. Thank you. And I really could attest that the sheriff doesn't want the millage rate to go up as we met yesterday, and that's one of the things he made clear.
Robin McDonald, Palm Coast. I'm not the smartest knife in the drawer, but I'm trying to figure out after these wonderful ladies presented this program about our taxes, can somebody explain to me what 2.1 people are? Because I don't know what that, is that like an arm or a leg or a head? What is that one? And I listened to all of the increases of different departments and different budgets. Well, the backbone or what keeps or the glue that keeps this whole city together through everything is that woman is sitting right there, Virginia Smith, okay? And I understood that they cut her budget by 4%. Well, let me try to explain something. Virginia Smith and the city clerk's office does more work every day by accident than most people will do on purpose. So maybe we need to crunch some numbers.
McDonald, talk to me, please.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. The city needs to crunch some numbers because the city clerk's office can't get cut because if you think that things are not being done now, well, if you cut their budget, more things are going to get cut. And the city clerk's office is the backbone and the glue that keeps this whole city together.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald. I would ask Elena to please to explain as to what the 2, I know what it is, but I would like for you to explain that what's a 2.1 person? It's no such thing as 2.1 person. There's an average, but go ahead.
Yes, thank you. So with the parks department, we actually budget seasonal hours. So if they run the programs for the public, then they'll need those hours and if they don't, they don't use them. So they're not necessarily full-time employees, but we put it in full-time employee equivalents so that you know exactly what you're approving. So if it were full-time positions, it would be a little bit over two positions. So that's just to give you a comparison if you're looking at the number of hours that we're asking for.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. Any further comments on the millage rate? Take your name to record and I'm sorry I stopped you before because you'll have your opportunity to speak now.
It's all right. Mark Lewis, Palm Coast, Cottonwood.
What was the name again? I'm sorry?
Mark Lewis on Cottonwood. I was surprised to see that the ad valorem, I think, because it went by pretty quickly, I think only goes up 10%. In a brief discussion with the Flagler County Property Appraiser, his comments were there's there's so much, there's so many big increases in in sales and so many big increases in how nice the homes are, the upgrades to the homes that that are that are being sold, that he would be surprised to see that the millage rate didn't come down. He's he's forecasting a huge increase in available property tax. And I understand you have your estimate and that's fine, but this kind of goes against what he talked to us about about three, three weeks ago. The house down the street from me just sold for a million 50 and I'm on Cottonwood. So there's big, big increases coming and I think this millage rate should actually come down. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Lewis.
Yes, George Mayo, Palm Coast. I also agree that I don't think the city clerk's office should have a position reduced. Other than the city manager, to me, the city clerk's office is probably the most important. Other than having the, you know, hurricane or something, you need other people, but on a day-to-day basis, she's very important and it's the old thing is have less people and ask them to do more in the in the same amount of time and that's just impossible. The other thing I was curious about is I didn't see whether there was an increase or decrease in the IT department. I know reading because of, as we see daily in the paper, ransomware for cities, counties, governments, hospitals, businesses, et cetera. IT departments are asking and acquiring more people and they are hiring people specifically to look for ransomware and to keep an eye on that. If we were to budget for that and that person, that one person, their salary could save us a ransomware of $5 million, $10 million, that would be well worth it. So I I just ask that we look into that and maybe if we haven't increased the IT department with the position to hire somebody specifically to keep track of that because once we're hit, it's going to cost us a lot of money. Thank you.
And Commissioner Mayo, just before I give it for give it to Elena, I have to to agree with Mr. Mr. Mayo that IT, it's a good investment and sometimes we invest to save and that's probably what we would be doing here, but that it's something that I don't know the exact numbers. Elena, would you like to comment on the reduce reduction of personnel and especially on the?
Yes, of course. So the city clerk's budget used to share a staff assistant with the IT operations department. That position was split 50/50. As the IT operations division has grown, they need that full-time position. So it's just transfer of duties and transfer of funding for that half position. What happens with such smaller type budgets like the city clerk, when you see a change, even if it's just 35,000, it looks like a significant change to their operations just because the denominator is so low. Now, as far as the IT operations budget, that is an internal services fund and it'll come to council, I believe, August 10th. On the 27th, we'll come back with your enterprise funds, which will include the IT fiber and then we'll come back to council in August with internal services fund, which will include the fleets, the facilities and the IT operations.
Thank you very much for your answer.
You're welcome.
You scared me of that for a minute.
Me too.
I thought you were going to give her three minutes to speak.
Yep. She started speaking more rapidly, too.
She's done.
Unreal. Any further comments from the public in this matter? Okay, I'll bring it back to this days and I think we should look into this a little more and this is a serious time. This is a serious time. We don't want to hurt anybody. I don't think one of us over here wants to hurt anybody out there, but we have to make decisions. We do have to make the decisions. We have a staff that due to COVID, we lost people, lost quite a few people. They were not replaced. We finally getting some people coming on board. The sheriff needs needs more people. Fire department needs more people. I would like for my colleagues to take that in consideration and comments and a motion if I have any motions to be presented and I'd like to remind my colleagues that whatever we approve here today as millage rate, if we approve here today, can only go down, cannot go up. So based on that, I could, you you you'd like to speak about it to council member.
I appreciate what Mr. Lewis said. Property values have gone up tremendously. I think we can do a little better on this maximum millage rate. I think- I think we don't have to stay where we were this year. I think we could maybe go to 4.60 as our maximum, and I would like to make that motion.
I'll second that.
Let's discuss that motion. Do we have an idea? I don't know if you're ready to tell us with a 4.60, what we have to cut, or...
Yeah, can I comment? With, so, as a council, we need to be able, and I'm a little disappointed that we weren't able to discuss this before the motion was made, on what would constitute the difference between the proposed mileage rate and the mileage rate that was just motioned for. Obviously, it would mean a reduction in services. I think it's a little, I'm sure Helena will have an answer on where the monies will mostly be transferred from, or what will be cut, what services will be reduced. But also, Councilman Danko, I think it falls onto you to do your job and discuss with us what you plan on being removed from this budget to get us to that number, so that we can come to a consensus.
I think first we set the agenda by setting the mileage rate, then we go through the budget line by line, which we're going to have to do, and I think we can all find places to make cuts once we get to that situation.
And then if we can't find those places...
I mean, it's kind of like what you do at home.
At home, I set my budget after I go through line item by line item on my necessities, and the total of those is my budget. I don't work backwards. If you don't know where you're going to cut, isn't it a little presumptuous to be able to say, my budget right now is $1,000, but next month it's going to be $500? But then force yourself into a position where, after you make that decision, you're saying, oh, man, everything I had was a necessity, where am I going to squeeze that additional $500 from?
Well, I know you're half my age, but I've spent my whole life dealing with a household budget, and I can tell you, that's not the way I do it. I know how much money I'm going to have every year, and I make cuts. Sometimes they're painful. Sometimes I'm giving up things that I would like to have. There are must-things that we must have in this city. We must have police, we must have fire, things of that nature, EMTs, so on and so forth, the must-haves. Then there are the things we want to have. And there's a big difference. You have that at home. You must, if you have a mortgage, you must pay your mortgage. If you have, obviously, home insurance, you must pay that, auto insurance, your electric bill, and obviously, you have to eat. Other items, you can cross off the list. You may have wanted to buy that new car, but you're not going to buy it this year. You may have wanted to build a swimming pool. You may have wanted to take three vacations. Maybe you're down to one. But I think what we need to do is, I think the folks in this city deserve a tax break. I certainly will not vote for a tax increase, but I think we can find places to cut as we go through this budget process. Once we have a new mayor, there'll be five of us up here, and we'll be able to go through this, and we'll all find places to make those cuts. But I think setting this mileage rate just a little lower will allow us, will actually force us to take a hard look at this budget. And let's see where we end up.
So my only rebuke is that's just not the best way to approach a problem.
You think it's not the best way? I think it is.
Okay. I appreciate your input, but please let me finish. The way that we are approaching this problem right now should be from the other perspective. And at home, just like the budget we have here, we have all the line items right in front of us. We have department-by-department budgets that were just shown to us, and we also have the line items available to our council for, you know, at our own discretion, whatever time we want to do it, go through line by line to be able to pull items out and question them. I think that's completely fair. If, as a council, we want to reduce our mileage rate, and we have these individual line items, just like at home, we have to ask ourselves, what are we going to remove? And you have all of the pieces of the puzzle to be able to answer all those questions. So as a councilman, I'm asking you to reduce our proposed mileage, our proposed mileage rate down to 4.60 from our proposed fiscal mileage rate of 4.69. With all the line items and the general budget funds in front of us, where would you cut costs to get us down to that? I agree, in conceptual world, it is beautiful thing to be able to say, we're going to, you know, squeeze the line items and cut the slush fund, but the reality is that we have all of the budgets in front of us and line items, and all we have to do is identify what we want to cut to be able to give the city of Palm Coast residents a tax cut, if we can do that. But it's operating in bad faith for us to be able to say, we're going to get to 4.60 with all the information in front of us, to not be able to say, and this is how. As a responsible representative, we should be able to say, this is what we're going to do, but more importantly, this is how we're going to get there. And, you know, it's funny, I'm looking at the netisms here, and it says, if you don't care where you're going, it doesn't matter what you push to get there. And I feel like, at this point, we're trying to just offer, you know, highlights of where we expect we're going, but we're not talking about how we're going to get there. I think that's a critical part for us to do our job, and this is the opportunity that we have to do that. Outside of council, we can't talk about it.
Do you see any place we can make a cut, one single cut? And if you do, please share with us.
With all due respect, you're the one asking to reduce the proposed mileage rate that was just presented to us. Are you saying no, you?
With all due respect, going your route will guarantee a tax increase.
Before we go on to a vote, even, Councilman Danko, even if you go 4.6, if you approve 4.6, according to what Mr. Lewis just said, you're still approving a tax rate. You realize that?
What we're doing is setting the maximum amount. It may go a lot lower. I'd like to find other places to cut as we pour through this budget. It's a complex budget. We're going to have to question a lot of things as this process continues. But what we're saying, at least to the taxpayers, all those folks out there, despite the stimulus checks that you raised a couple weeks ago, Mr. Clufus, that wasn't a lot of money for folks who lost their jobs.
But out of fixed incomes...
Not a lot of money. $1,200, you know, here, $600 here. That doesn't pay, that's not a lot of money coming from that stimulus check when you've actually lost your job, or your business has lost a lot of income. You know, I mean, it's just not a lot. I mean, sure, yeah, people are happy to get a check at Christmas time or whatever, but, you know, that's not a lot of money when you don't have an income coming in. But all I'm saying is, we can send a message to the taxpayers that we feel your pain, we know what you've been through with this virus for the last year and a half. We're going to tighten our belts just a little bit. We're just setting that maximum rate lower than what it was this year. We may come down even lower if we find places to cut as the process goes. So all I'm suggesting today is we send a little message to the folks of Palm Coast that we care, that we know what you've been through, and that we can tighten our belts here, too. That's all I'm proposing.
May I just say one more thing? All I'm saying is that you're absolutely right. This rate could go way lower if we find a path there. And today, our job as a council and as a body is to be able to say, this is as high as we're going to go, and we could get to this rollback mileage rate. But without saying, here is how we're going to get there, or how we're going to reduce to 4.60, the worst-case scenario is we can't find any of those line items. If you had, if you could give me an instance where we could remove funding from a project or some other service where we could get it to 4.60, because you've shown to our council, and obviously would be confirmed by Gwen and Helena, that it is feasible to get there with that information, it just seems far more prudent to me to say, here's our worst-case scenario, and we're going to get to 4.60, but we don't know how yet. So the maximum mileage rate that we're setting at this time, because we can't enumerate out the line items that we want to reduce, is 4.6989. I think, I don't think the 1/10th of a mileage rate percentage is a big enough, you know, it doesn't really make a difference because it's the maximum mileage rate anyway, so why hamstring ourselves now when, before we've actually identified out those line items?
If we can't find that small little percentage while going over this budget, shame on us.
Well, shame on you. How come you haven't found it?
I'm speaking. We should be able to say, we're going to tighten our belts a little bit, we will find places to do that. That's our job. That's what this role is, and all we're doing is sending a message to the taxpayers that we're not just going to increase your taxes. We're going to work a little hard to find some places to make some cuts. It's not, it's not a large difference, I agree, from 4.60 to 4.169, but it is a message, and doing anything other than that sends a message that, yeah, we're going to raise your taxes.
Without those details, I just feel like we're setting the message of, this is where we're going. I'm just not sure how we're going to get there yet.
I'd like to, can I speak? I'd like to withdraw my second motion.
We now, just from a procedural standpoint, we now have a motion that awaits, where the prior second has been withdrawn. So it would be appropriate procedurally for the council to await another second, or the motion would fail for lack of a second. That's where we are procedurally.
Then I'm going to ask, the motion still stands, the second has been withdrawn, do I have a second to the original motion of Councilman Danko? No, motion fails for lack of second.
The council can now proceed with further discussion or another motion.
I, one second, please. I'm going to give it to you, and at this point, I would like to make a motion to approve 4.69, which is what we have now. And then if we find, ladies and gentlemen, if we find places to cut, none of us over here, I guarantee you, none of us over here wants to raise one cent of taxes that we don't have to. So therefore, I would like to keep the same mileage rate we have for the fifth year in a row. For the fifth year in a row, we will not raise our mileage rate. I made that, I'll make that motion.
The motion awaits a second.
Can I pass the gamble to Victor? Make a second?
Yes, you could. Who is the next person in line of...
I think that's probably...
Councilmember Barbosa and Councilmember Danko were both sworn in on the same day. Councilmember Barbosa's term ends prior to, because he was filling the rest of the term.
And alphabetical order.
Okay, so, all right, here we are. You are now the chairperson.
Okay, I will second Acting Mayor Brinkeno's motion.
We now have a motion. We have, it has been second for discussion or action. The motion is to approve the proposed maximum mileage rate as set forth in the proposed resolution that is in your agenda packet.
I comment on my, on my motion. I just think it's the responsible thing to do, to play it safe. If we have a mileage rate of 4.69, we could always bring it down. We could always bring it down. If we find the places to cut, we could always bring it down. There's no ifs or buts about it. We could line item, and we could veto whatever we want to veto. But we got to do it in a safe way, that if something, like, we have to do, like, the places where we have to invest, then I think that, gosh, we should, we should play it safe. We could always come down, but we cannot go up.
I also think, just as, as a role of our governing body, this is not a final decision, and this is just the safest, most prudent thing to do as an operational city. I mean, God forbid, who knows what's going to come between now and when we actually adopt the mileage rate as far as, you know, any worldly events, so I just think it's the most prudent thing to do at this point. And that's what I feel like our role appears to do, is to keep the trains on the tracks.
What horrible events would you be...
Like hurricanes or anything like that, that potentially would, you know, cause an increase to our reserve funds and things like that. That's what I meant by natural occurrences. I'm just talking about risk mitigation, and by Council, or Mayor Brinkeno's motion, I feel like that's the greatest mitigation to risk.
Any further discussion?
I ask for clarification on the motion that is 4.6989.
Correct.
I'm not sure if we need that 89 in there, so that's why I'm clarifying.
Yes, yes.
That is correct. There's not any further discussion. It would be the chairman's prerogative to call for a vote on the motion.
So we go vote?
Virginia, if you can call, roll on the motion that's on the floor.
Mayor Brinkeno.
Yes.
Councilmember Danko.
No.
Councilmember Clufus.
Yes.
Councilmember Barbosa.
No.
That motion fails, so we now hand it back.
Oh, it doesn't have to go back to me then, back to...
No, it goes back to where it started.
Straight to me.
Yeah.
I'd like to make a motion for rollback rate.
I'll second it, and just to start the conversation, can you explain what you mean?
You don't have to second it to start the conversation. You could ask...
Oh, I thought normally we have a second.
No, no, you don't have to second it to start a discussion.
Well, I agree on not raising taxes, so that's why I didn't go for the 4.6. Like Brinkeno said, that would be raising the taxes. So I agree with the rollback rate of 4.4593.
Yeah, I'll second that motion.
I, Councilman Barbosa, please, tell me what you're going to cut out of this budget to get back to the rollback rate of 4.45.
Well, we could start by the only 16% out of $5 million. That would be over $800,000. We could start there, we could start with other stuff.
16% of what?
Can you explain that?
Can you? I'm sorry, I didn't get it.
16% of the general fund money that's going to pickleball? You said it was 16%?
That's already been appropriated.
Okay.
You can't cut that. It's already been appropriated.
Well, I guess we're going to have to find other cuts.
I guess, I guess we have to find other cuts. No doubt about it. That's why we, that's why we are, if you're going to go with a minimum, with a rollback, then you're going to have to find a lot of cuts. And I'll repeat this three times, a lot of cuts.
Am I not entitled to what I want?
Hold on one second. I'm, and I'm commenting on what you want.
Okay.
Allow me to comment, okay? If you rollback, no doubt about it, would be a beautiful thing if we could do it. If we want to be fiscally responsible, like we all said on our campaigns, could you imagine what Ms. Alves would have have to cut? Tell every single one, public works, sheriffs, tell everybody else, you know the sheriff wouldn't get his guys if you cut it back there. You know very well they wouldn't get it. They wouldn't get one guy if you bring it back.
Why would that be?
Okay.
We could get more cuts.
I don't think I have any more comments regarding that, and there's a motion, seconded. Let me call for a vote. Those in favor of rolling back 4.4593, say aye.
Aye.
Those against?
Aye.
So therefore, the stable, we motion without having a majority at this time. So I could see, and let's be clear about it, I could see that we're not going to go nowhere today. And due to the fact that we're going nowhere today, we're going to wait for the new mayor that could see whatever we can see here. When he, he or she comes in, we'll decide what happens here, and unless I'm, something that I'm missing over here, I would like to go into the next.
I do have a question. When the new mayor comes into office, can the new mayor make a resolution to revisit the pickleball court thing?
I, listen, if I may...
Because you had mentioned that the, whatever the 16% was couldn't be cut, but I understand that the new mayor actually could be able to make a motion to reconsider the racquetball thing, and we could actually vote to end it, and that 16% could come back. And I just want to make sure I'm correct on that.
From a procedural standpoint, a motion for reconsideration can only be made by one of the individuals that was on the prevailing side of the, of the, of the original motion that passed. As the incoming mayor was not, that incoming mayor would not be able to make the motion. I think I would suggest also, the important, the important thing is for, and I cannot answer this, is what actions may have been taken since this council did approve the agenda item and the expenditure of the funds for the, for the improvements made to that recreational facility. And by that, I mean, have contracts been let, what other actions have been taken that would make it difficult to reverse that direction? And I'm not saying there have been. I don't know.
So a huge...
But that would be the discussion.
A huge increase in, say, construction costs and materials could force us to reconsider this?
Well, certainly that would, that would be an important factor, but, and I agree, but what I was referring to, Councilmember Danko, would be, I don't know, since, and it's been, I don't know, a month, six weeks, I don't, I apologize, I don't know how long it's been since the council took action on that expenditure. If contracts have been signed and the city is bound under the terms of those contracts, we would have to consider our, the city's ability if we were going to reverse course and not proceed with this action and these expenditures, would we be able to, and at what expense would it cost to get out of those contractual obligations? So that is, I'm not, I'm not saying that that's impossible, but I would respectfully suggest that that's a consideration, and I don't have the answers to that at this time. From a, to answer your question specifically, the... From a, to answer your question specifically, the, from a procedural standpoint, a Roberts rule, the, the individuals that voted in favor of the original motion to approve that increase for the recreational facility would have the ability to file a motion for reconsideration.
Can you, can you bring back that chart where it said 10% increase, the value of homes? Nowhere on the chart has it raised that high before.
But, what's that?
Years before, it never raised 10.22%.
The increase in home values?
Yes.
Absolutely, you're absolutely right, and I think with all this new construction and the value of homes going up specifically in Palm Coast, I mean, you're absolutely right, Flagler County and Palm Coast specifically have had their home values go up, which leads me to believe that the citizens of Palm Coast, specifically with new construction, expect our level of service to stay the same, and our roads to be just as high quality as they are today, and our parks, and our government to provide the services that they are building and moving into our city as we are today, tomorrow.
Why would you, we keep the rate the same if the amount is a lot higher than every year?
As far as, like, in regards to population growth?
For the milit rate. So far, the, the, all the other councils have kept the milit rate at whatever that number was.
4.69.
4.69, like you said. So why keep it the same if we're gonna be, the value of homes are going so high?
Well, so the tire property value with being homestead, it doesn't allow us to realize all, all of those gains, but the services that the additional money would fund have been what Helena and Gwen have been showing us, that the, the monies that we're receiving are budgeted for, so...
Mind you, we are just coming out of COVID, so people are short on money, and a crash is coming soon.
So are we short, though? Because the amount of pools that have been built in Palm Coast is astronomical, and the construction and the cost of home leaves me to believe that perhaps we haven't been impacted as severely as some other places in the country. We have a very high growth rate, construction is ridiculous around here, which is great.
If we have a lot of pools being built, that means the value's going up.
Exactly, and people have money to spend on pools. And we, well, unfortunately, most of those homes are probably homestead, so we wouldn't realize all of it again, but the, eventually they will in a home sale, but what that means is that people have, the people who are building homes, are building pools, we all know that average pool is $60,000 post-construction.
I believe we have an influx of people from the Northeast who are fleeing high taxes and moving here, and the last thing they wanna see are high taxes here, that's why they're fleeing states like New York and New Jersey and so on and so forth. Your pool example is anecdotal at best. We have a lot of senior citizens that aren't building pools, and I also think this percentage change of 10.22, well, I guess that must have come as an estimate from the county, I think that's probably pretty low. Homes are selling for much more right now, but rest assured, that won't continue. There will be a crash, I have no doubt about it. There will be a crash when, 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 when folks are forced to pay their rent, and then renters have to, have to leave because they're being evicted because they haven't paid their rent, and then the folks that own that property are going to have to be, they're gonna go foreclosed because they haven't paid their mortgage, because they haven't collected their rent, we're gonna start seeing a flood of homes and a flood of short sales, and we're gonna see a reversal down the road. This, this isn't gonna continue, and yet we're gonna hit people with, with a higher property tax. It, it makes no sense to me.
Mr. Mayor, Council, if I may, and, and I'm gonna defer to Helena on this one, but to your point, Councilmember Barbosa, this, this percentage change of 10.22, that's my understanding, please correct me, Helena, if I'm wrong, that represents the change, property, the, the percentage change in the taxable property value, and so that takes into consideration that there will be an unequal increase in taxable property values. Many people will see an increase of 3% under Save Our Homes, whereas others who do not enjoy that, that, that tax benefit will incur a, a larger increase in, in their taxable values. My understanding is, is that 10.22 is what the, the tax collector has determined is the net property tax value increase, but it's not, it doesn't mean that everyone's property tax values from a tax standpoint that they're gonna pay will be 10.22, it's gonna be variable. Is, is that a fair?
That is correct, and the new construction is approximately 4.3%.
Thank you for that clarification.
Of that 10.22%.
Most of homesteads go up 3%, that's it, and that older people, the ones that are, you know, hurting from COVID, they are, actually, most of them, and we could see that we have a big, big percentage of people here are homesteaded, except for those that own a home for rent and all of that, that's a different, that's completely different. But before I put this and go into the next item, I think Councilman Danko said something that's, he was talking about the 18th, the 18% or 16% that we spent. I, I'd like to remind Councilman Danko that you are not against the, the project with the tennis, what you were against were the timing. You are not against it, and if you want me to repeat your words, I could repeat it. You were not against it.
I did vote against it.
Excuse me, sir, hold on one second. You said you voted against it for the timing, not for the value, it's on tape.
Well, yeah, yes, and I, let, let me, let's just clarify that since you brought that up. What I said was, we had a list of 20-something-odd items that were never prioritized, so the first thing I wanted to do was prioritize those items, because we were dumping a lot of money into one place. So yes, I thought that we, I thought that there were other items possibly that would reach a higher priority of where we spend those impact fees, and I felt that the Racquetball Center was on the bottom of that list, and I just wanna clarify that, so you understand what I was saying.
Well, basically, you still wanna spend the money, just in different projects.
Well, as you, as you well know, those impact fees are for park and recreation, we do need to spend them, we didn't need to spend them all in one shot, we had a long, from what the former city manager explained to me, was we had several years or more where we could have spread that spending out, and I thought that was a foolish place to dump all the money. Also, the fact that we really didn't have a business plan, the fact is that we're going to have to keep that place funded, that concerned me too, so I just wanna make sure we're on the same page with that.
Thank you, and we are on the same page, still spending the money, that's the, the bottom line.
So you're saying we could push back the project?
No, 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 that's not what I said. Let me go back to, uh, business over here.
Mr. Mayor, Council...
I'm not done talking.
Regarding this?
Yeah.
Because I'm about to move into, okay, go ahead.
I made a promise to the people that voted for me, that would not raise taxes, and I'm not gonna raise any tax.
Mr. Mayor, Council, from a procedural standpoint, the only thing I'd like to just remind the councils, while the action was not taken today, we do have under, under the TRIM statute, we have 35 days from the time that the city received the certificate of, of value from the tax collector's office. So Helena, you correct me if I'm wrong again, but my understanding is we have until August 4th?
That is correct.
August 4th, for this council to take action, to, to notify the tax collector of the, the TRIM, the, the amount of the, the proposed tax rate. So this must come back to you, and from a standpoint of process, I'll defer to the council, but I'm just reminding you, we, we do have a statutory obligation to, to fill in that blank, to fill in that blank on this, this draft resolution that you were, that we were, we're working on today, and we need to get that done and passed by this council no later than, I guess, the day before that 35th day.
Yes.
So obviously, there's different ways to do that, but, but I just wanna remind the council, we, we do still have work to do, and we have a statutory obligation to do it.
So we can wait until there's a new mayor to set this milit rate?
Let's, let's make sure, let's have the conversation. I believe, yes, sir, I believe that is correct, we have an election on the 27th, so...
And the new mayor would...
The official results on July 30th, which is four days, five days before...
35 days from today?
No, from, the receipt from the tax collector's office.
Let's sum, sum up again, so we have, we have, we have to do something before the 4th of August.
Do we have to publicly notice, should we be publicly noticing that now, so that everything is in accordance with having to publicly notice these meetings?
They go on our website, the five days before, the budget adds for the final budget in accordance with TRIM goes in the newspaper, five days prior to the final adoption, which is in September.
Gotcha, but for this special meeting that we would have to hold to...
Special meeting would be, as soon as you call it, I can have it posted.
Okay, excellent.
Council's policy, rules, and procedures are 24 hours' notice, if possible, for emergency meetings and then special meetings.
And the certification's gonna tell you.
The cer, final official certification from the supervisor of elections will be on July 30th, after the canvassing board.
So, Virginia, the new mayor would be seated on the 3rd of August, is that correct?
We can have a special meeting to swear that person in, after the canvassing board on the 30th, or that Monday, which is August 2nd, or you can do it at August 3rd in the evening.
Okay, which is gonna be a, a one item, just swearing of the new mayor for that special meeting?
For the special meeting, has the, the one topic of the swear-in, but if you're also gonna then continue with the, the TRIM, we, you can have that second special meeting.
On the 3rd?
In other, in other words, before the 4th, obviously, you're gonna be swearing in the new mayor.
Okay.
And as soon as that's done, by law, to fulfill our statutory responsibilities, we need to have an agenda item to complete this, to complete this resolution, to fill in that blank, to put a number in there with, with, where we've got a, a majority of the quorum.
Can we do it on the 3rd, after, because usually the swearing, the swearing in is the last thing? So basically, what we're doing, swearing in a, a new mayor, and then, once she takes the gavel, we'll have an item at the end that we have to decide, which is the, the milit rate, or...
I'll defer to Ms. Alves on the timing, because council meets at 6:00 PM on the 3rd, and by then, the super, the, sorry, the tax collector's office and TRIM, and the state TRIM offices are closed at 5:00 PM, so does it matter, is it due by 11:59 PM, or...
It is due on August 4th, so if you do take action on the 3rd, we would submit it the next following day, we'll just have to get all the signatures on the resolution, everything that we need, and then do it first thing in the morning.
And can we add that, after, actually, the, the new mayor being sworn in, we could add that line as to work again on the, on the TRIM rate?
An agenda item for the resolution to approve the TRIM, absolutely.
Is that okay with my colleagues?
That works good. Sorry to get into the weeds, but this is such an important agenda item that...
It's great for everybody to understand.
We, we need to make sure that this council's on the same page with regard to this process.
Okay, moving on to agenda item number G5 right now, and I would like Ms. Bevan to speak about it, please.
Thank you, Mayor, we actually...
Actually, G5 and G6, they're under the same...
Thank you. We have staff here, there's a presentation, I understand, and we also have outside services to provide an update to council on these next two items.
Good morning, Mayor, City Council, Jason DiLorenzo, Chief Development Officer. The, you're gonna have one presentation here that's going to cover building permit fees and stormwater fees related to building permits or new construction. They're separate resolutions, you'll see in your packet, and several months ago, well, let me give you a little bit of background, for about the last 10 years or so, the building permit fees have been kind of yo-yoing around, not the fee, but the revenue associated with building permits has been yo-yoing. We've been growing the fund balance, and then we'd have to reduce the fees to bring down the fund balance, to bring it back within state law, and so this has been going back and forth. So we, we decided last year that it's time to do a full rate study, and we went out and, and got quotes, and we hired Mr. Brian Mance from GovRates to provide us with that study, and then Stormwater piggybacked on, on our contract with Mr. Mance, and they worked on their study as well for their portion of the fees. So Mr. Mance is gonna go through his presentation on how he helped us establish the fees, and staff will be here to answer any questions, and I should also let you know that we work directly with the Home Builders Association, we had stakeholder meetings with them at the beginning of the process and near the end of the process to get their feedback, and they are in relative support of the, of the new fee structure, so Mr. Mance.
Well, good morning.
Good morning.
For the record, my name is Brian Mance from GovRates, and I just, thank you for the introduction, and I'm gonna be talking about the recommendations to the, to the, to the fee changes.
How to speak into the microphone, please. Thank you, thank you.
Okay.
You can lift it up.
No, that's, that's good enough of it.
Oh, okay. So first of all, I'll, I'll talk about, about building fees, and through, already, multiple times today during this meeting, the issue of, of public safety has been, has been brought up, and that's, the, the building division's activities are integrally linked to public safety. They're, they're basically enforcing the, the Florida Building Code to help make sure that buildings can withstand, you know, a certain, a certain level of hurricanes, also, you know, as, as everyone's familiar, there have been some highly publicized building collapses, and so it's just important, this, this department, obviously, is, is, you know, working to make sure that, that the buildings are built up to, to, to ensure that they're safe to be, to, to be occupied in. The last time that the building fees were adjusted were, was in 2016, or about five years ago, and at that time, there was about a reduc, there was a reduction in certain fees. So the fees, Palm Coast fees have several categories, administrative fees, plan and review fees, inspection fees for residential, and also inspection fees for commercial multifamily. There are virtually unlimited possible ways to structure the fees, and the objective is to be reasonable, and as I'll, I'll talk about, the, also, another objective is to just look at this regularly to, to ensure that the fees remain reasonable. So in 2019, there was an amendment to the Florida statutes that, that the Building Permits Fund cannot carry forward an amount exceeding the average operating budget over the past four years. So the city's four-year average for fiscal year 2022 is $2.7 million. As of September 30th of 2020, the Building Permits Fund balance was $4.02 million, so it exceeded the, the, the limit per the Florida statutes, and as such, since the last quarter of 2020, the city has only been charging revision and inspection, reinspection fees to reduce the fund balance. And through, through research, it was discovered that about $900,000 of the fund balance should have been allocated to the Stormwater Fund. With respect to department operations, because of the, just the tremendous amount of construction activity that's been, that's, that's been, that the city has been experiencing, the Building Permits Fund costs have been increasing, such that by 2000, in 2022, where the, the budget is about $3.3 million of, of operating and capital expenses. The reasons for the cost increases include additional perm, positions due to the increased permitting activity, increased indirect cost allocations for administration, facilities, IT, as the city continues to improve its methodology to ensure fairness among departments, increases in professional services, there's been a higher need to, to outsource with the increased permitting activity to, to maintain the level of service, and increase in the fleet transfer allocation due to, to the new positions. So the, the proposed plans are to, the, right now, the, you know, because the, the city has only been charging reinspection fees, the fund balance is anticipated to, to reach the $2 million target that was discussed, has been discussed with the HBA, to, anticipated to be, reach $2 million by August 2021, and that's about $700,000 less than the amount allowed per Florida statutes, and the idea is that we then wanna start charging a new schedule of, of fees that's, that's, that won't overrecover. So the proposed plan is to implement a schedule of building fees that will generate about $3.3 million in revenue. This has been a multi-month process of extensive staff review to try and come up with, with time estimates and reasonable valuations to arrive at, at reasonable fees, and, you know, as I mentioned, we were wanting it to be an ongoing process where it's reviewed every year, just to ensure that fees remain reasonable and do not overrecover on expenses. So the estimated, as I mentioned, the estimated Building Permits Fund budget for 2022 is $3.3 million. There are a lot of, with respect to the proposed changes, they, they're redlined in, in the, in the resolution, but we, as, as Jason mentioned, we've met with the HBA on... But we as as Jason mentioned, we've met with the HBA on multiple occasions, and we have incorporated HBA feedback into the proposed fee schedule. We're maintaining most of the provisions of the existing fees, but we've made adjustments based on cost estimates where applicable. We we believe that the proposed fees reasonably capture the costs to provide service, given a wide range of time spent on a specific permit. And and city staff is comfortable with the existing methodology. Some of the changes, we increased in administrative fees for residential or agricultural buildings from $20 to $30. We added administrative fees for when private providers are utilized for for inspections. We eliminated the separate mechanical, electrical, and plumbing inspection fees. So we have just one fee for for inspections. We eliminated fees no longer charged from from the schedule. We eliminate them. And as far as and and the net effect is that for a $250,000 single-family house, the the when we have a compare building fee permits, the it's it turns out to be about a $338 reduction in the bill in the cost of the building permit. And for a $2 million commercial building, it's a reduction of $765. We've developed a financial model for ongoing city use. It's a it's a it's a detailed model, but it it has a revenue tab. The idea is we're going to build a long-term history of revenue and expenses and just to continue to ensure, use the model to to ensure that the fees remain reasonable. And the model projects how we're doing on on cash balances based on our projections. So that that covers the the building fee permit section of this presentation. The other one, the the other topic is stormwater review and inspection fees. So again, once again, we're we're talking about something related to-
Just go one second. You don't mind listening to both of them at the same time because they are related? Or you want to separate them?
That's fine by me. I'm just I hope we're all paying attention.
It's fine. Thank you.
Okay. So this is again, this is again, we're we're talking about activities that are related to public safety, making sure that that, for example, that the that the city doesn't flood due to inadequately designed stormwater systems. These fees, these inspection fees were last adjusted in 2004 or about 17 years ago. And an important takeaway is that to the extent that they're not right-sized, to their to their costs, a portion of these these review and inspections costs must be paid by all residents through monthly stormwater user rates. So these fees have the following, they have a stormwater, these fees have two categories. One is stormwater and and engineering review fees to recover the costs of reviewing documentation as well as performing surveys and applicable applicable CAD work during the development process. And also stormwater inspection fees to recover the costs of field inspections for permits. And you know, this this kind of kind of shows a a a summary of the of the charges that are being being proposed and for different types of of establishments. And we feel that, you know, again, the the staff did some extensive review and extensive time estimates to come up with these these fees. And of course, the the idea, as as I've, you know, mentioned multiple times, is just to continue to review them on an annual basis to ensure they remain reasonable. So the requested city council action is to first for the building fees, to adopt the revised schedule of building rates, fees, and charges. Again, they recover the costs of helping to ensure public safety. They're considered fair and reasonable to by the city staff, given a wide range of time to provide service for a given permit. And they are projected to generate the revenue required to recover the city's permit, that building permit fund costs for fiscal year 2022. And with respect to the stormwater inspection and review fees, we recommend adoption of of that schedule. They recover the costs of helping to ensure public safety. They were last adjusted in 2004 or or 17 years ago. We believe that they reasonably cover the costs of providing service, giving salary and benefit costs, time estimates, involvement of supervisors and administrative charges. And the updated fees will help maintain the level of service. And as I mentioned, a key take takeaway is that they also reduce the cost that must be recovered through through all residents through monthly stormwater rates. And we we would ask that that the council support the city staff and HBA review of the fees on an annual basis to ensure that the fees remain fair and reasonable and not wait another five years or just just, you know, just keep on top of the of the proposed fees.
Thank you. Mr. Di Lorenzo, I see on the very last one that Home Builders Associations have reviewed it. Can you tell us what's their opinion about this? Because they are the ones with the most interest in this matter. Can you brief us on what they thinking on this matter?
Yes, sir. We received an email from their executive director and board of directors last week. It said they respected the process that we went through. They understand where the rates are. They're comfortable with the rates. They have some concerns about the the building department budget. I think they'll have the opportunity to discuss those concerns with you. I think July the 27th is when you see the Building Enterprise Fund budget. And but otherwise, as far as the rates go, they were comfortable with the process they went through, and they look forward to the to using the modeling in the future to make sure or ensure that we're only collecting what we need to operate the the building fund and to enforce the Florida Building Code.
Thank you. I just want to make sure that my colleagues are at that.
One question.
And I haven't seen a representative from the Home Builders here.
Gotcha. One question, just so I assume this is, my presumption's correct. The adjustment in rates, will will the $2 million that we're the threshold that we're trying to get to, will that continue to decline? Or is the goal of this to maintain a steady balance inside of that fund? I was just unsure whether the adjustments we're making are going to set the trajectory on a downward trend to where it continually dwindles? Or we'll find ourselves potentially above the 2.1 threshold again?
Well, we're we're projecting that this is going to, we're going to, our revenues are going to be-
Equilibrium. Understood.
And we're going to break even. That's that's our goal.
Fair.
But we want to, as I mentioned, review it on an annual basis to make sure we keep breaking even and we're not overrecovering again so that we're in statutory violation of of the fund balance that that the the fund is allowed to 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 carry forward.
So you really want to keep that balance so we don't have to do what you did? How much did we have to give back to the?
About $2 million.
$2 million you had to give back?
Yes.
So we'll avoid that by balancing it, then the $2 million is probably what it is.
And and if I may, Mayor, the the reason to keep the $2 million balance or some fund balance is to be able to handle fluctuations in business, right? So if we have several down years, then we can, you know, we can, we, of course, we would adjust the budget to to match that. But then we would also have the fund balance to kind of, you know, soften soften the blow there. The other part of that would be if if we were to have a a large disaster, you would normally suspend building permit fees for repairs from like a hurricane or a natural disaster, which would then cut revenue. And then also you'd have a lot of overtime as well. So it's another reason why the Enterprise Fund would have a fund balance like that.
And we still within the state mandate?
Yes.
Seven seventeen years seems an awful long time. Is there anything to prevent that long period of time in the future to to do this every three years, five years?
That the stormwater review was was 17 years. And no, there's nothing from from preventing it. And I think this is something going forward that we'll be able to maintain a lot easier. And the tool that Mr. Mance provided to us, the the modeling tool, is going to help us with that.
Thank you. Any further questions? Okay, there's no further questions.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just add one last thing, which is that also with our discussions with the Home Builder Association, when we started this last year, we provided a 60-day notice that fees would be resuming. And we we did provide that notice in advance, and fees will be resuming on August the 2nd if and if you approve this at the new rates.
Thank you. Any comments or questions regarding this item 5 and 6? Nope. I would like to bring it to the to the public before I bring it back to a vote, even though we have to vote separately.
We'll be voting separately.
But we could discuss it together.
We need to have the public's input.
Okay, thank you. Any no comments from the public? I'll bring it back to this dais. And on item G5, which regards with inspection fees, I'll send a motion.
I'll make the motion. Second.
Motion made in second. Let's vote. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those against? Four to zero. Okay, still under the same presentation, already at the public.
Open again for public comments, Mayor.
I have to because I had them both anyway. So even though I had asked for both comments on both items, let me bring it back to the public again regarding as a resolution G5 regarding the stormwater inspection fees. Hearing, okay. Go ahead, go ahead. You're going to have to come here. I'm sorry, it's it's you probably have one of the old ones.
There was an amended agenda.
It was an amended agenda. Sorry, you probably didn't get that one. All right, hearing none, bring it back here and I'll get answered in a motion.
Yep. I'll motion to approve item H6.
I'll second.
Motion second. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those against? Four to zero.
Thank you, Mayor City Council.
Okay, number seven, G7. I think Mr. Richmond, you have to.
Mayor Council, this is the next step in in our nuisance abatement assessment program that we started back in 2010. This was initially heard by this council at your in your July 13th workshop. There have been no changes. What what this specific action is doing is is setting the preliminary assessment rule. The final assessment rule will be has to be adopted prior to September 15th. And it looks like this is going to come back to you. The final assessment will come back to you on August 10th. The purpose of this is to recoup the the funds that the city of Palm Coast has spent consistent with the process that is set forth in Chapter 35 of your your code, which creates a an additional tool and toolbox to have the city try to make the city look better and 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 properties that have fallen out of care come into compliance with the code and the expectations of their neighbors. What what happens is is there's notice sent out. If there's non-compliance, then after a reasonable period of time, the city hires a contractor to go out and trim the lawn or whatever it is. And and then there's another notice that's sent out, says, please pay for this cost. And if that's not paid, then there's a record kept of that. And and the cumulative amount of those those unpaid bills are an input on the tax bill, the non-advalorem taxes. And and these folks, for the work that was done on their behalf and for the benefit of the community, will have to pay these these charges along with their taxes. And that's how the city is made whole. Your step again today is just this is the preliminary assessment rule.
Do you have any comments over here on this matter?
No.
I'll bring it to the public on the item G7. Hearing none, bring it back over here. I'll turn a motion.
I will move to approve the nuisance abatement initial assessment.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion second. Vote. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those against? Four to zero. Item G8, Mr. Papa.
I'm not sure, Mr. Mayor, but I think there may be one presentation for items. Please tell me if I'm wrong. Items eight, nine, and 10.
That's correct, sir.
All all three of them. Okay. Even though they're going to have to be voted separately.
Yes, sir, absolutely.
Go ahead, Mr. Papa.
Got to give the presentation three times, though.
Sure. I know that the council has heard this presentation before, so.
If there's any changes to it.
There's no changes to the presentation. I'll just try to be a little briefer. How's that?
Very good.
Good morning, Mayor, members of city council, Jose Papa for the Community Development Department. The the next three items are related to our Community Development Block Grant Program. And again, just the background, this is a the CDBG program is federal funding that we receive on an annual basis. And as part of that program, we're required to do certain things, such as adopt an action plan and also a strategic action plan, a consolidated plan. The items you have before you today, one is that what we have an amendment to the fiscal year 20 action plan approval of the rules for the first-time homebuyers program and the approval of next year's action plan, that is, the fiscal year that will begin on October 1st. Again, the program is intended to benefit those who are low mod meet the low moderate income requirements. They're to eliminate prevent or eliminate summer blight and to address any urgent community or development needs, such as a a national emergency. The city has been a part of this program since 2012, and our funding typically varies between $450,000 to $500,000 per year. And the stated documents that we need to complete and approve, consolidated plan, strategic plan, action plan, and analysis of impediments to fair housing choice. And annually, we provide an end-of-year report in in the December timeframe. So typical CDBG programs, housing-related activities, public services, economic development, infrastructure improvements, and as well as using funds to for planning, administration, and monitoring of the program. Within the city of Palm Coast, our main projects have been the completion of that Seminole Woods neighborhood multi-use path sidewalk project, which is complete. Housing rehabilitation are our most active and most popular, most draws the most interest in terms of of participation, and public service activities, summer camps. And fast, again, we funded the Flagler County Free Clinic and, of course, covering the administrative costs. So the first item on your agenda is the action plan. And for the 20 upcoming fiscal year, our allocation is $488,458. Typical with previous activities, we intend the the recommendation from the Citizens Advisory Task Force is to provide about $250,000 for the financial assistance for home repair, funding $100,000 for our first-time homebuyers program, $40,000 for public service activities, and about $97,000 for planning and administration of the program. Again, the Citizens Advisory Task Force, or the CATF, held a public hearing on May 26th, and they recommended city council approve the proposed action plan. If just moving on, the second item on your agenda is an amendment to the 20 action plan. And this is just a recommendation from the Citizens Advisory Task Force to move about $300,000 from public service activities to the housing rehab activities. And in lieu of those $300,000 from public service activities, we will use the round three allocation from the CARES Act to sup to replace those public service activities funding. And I've given you this background that really it's due to the likely the the increase in construction cost and some of the aging housing stock within the city of Palm Coast that we are seeing an increase in activity in request for assistance with with home repairs. And so the the proposal here again is to add some provide additional funds through housing rehab activities and replace that with CARES Act funds. And again, Citizens Advisory Task Force held a public hearing and recommends that the city council approve the amendments. And the last item is the Homebuyers Assistance Program Plan. And this is just lays out the rules and regulations for participation within the within that homebuyers assistance program. Again, any participant must meet the the income requirements of the CDBG program. Your maximum award would be from $10,000 to $35,000 with a maximum award not to exceed 20% of the purchase price or $35,000, whichever is greater. Sorry, whichever is less, I should say. Is that right? I'm confusing myself, but it's no more than it'll be, I'm sorry, it'll be no more than $35,000. So and finally, again, that assistance will be in the form of a 10-15-year note as a second mortgage on the property. Again, it's quiet. There's no interest rate on it. It's not due unless the home is sold before that 10- or 15-year period. And prefabric prefab manufactured or mobile homes will not be eligible for to participate under this. this program. And so the CATF also recommends approval of that, those rules. And I'll be happy to answer any question. We're at the point where, with the public hearing, the items have been out on our website for a 30-day public comment period, we have not received any comments. And as I mentioned previously, we also held a previous public hearing before our advisory board, and they provided comments, and there were no comments received at that meeting also.
All right, I'll bring it back to this board. On regard, regards of eight, nine, and 10 items of this agenda, any comments, or my colleagues, any? I'll bring it to the public regarding items eight, nine, and 10. Hearing none, bring it back to this dais, and I'll answer the motion for item eight.
Motion.
Seconded.
Okay, let's vote. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those against? Four to zero. Item nine, I'll answer the motion.
I'll make it.
Second.
Made in second. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against? No. Item 10, let's send a motion.
Motion.
I'll second it.
Okay. Those in favor?
Aye.
Those against?
Thank you, Council.
Thank you, Jose.
Thank you. Consent agenda, item 11, do we have a presentation on this?
No, sir.
No. All right. Any comments or questions regarding this presentation from my colleagues? No? Anyone from the public who wishes to comment, or regarding item 11, this consent agenda? No. So therefore, bring it back to a vote.
Consent agenda as read.
I'll second.
Okay, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those against? Four to zero. Agenda item aye, public participation. Remember, you have three minutes, no campaigning, and please say your name to the record, and save your mind. Hearing none, I'll close public participation. Discussion by city council on matters not on the agenda, starting-
I would like to thank the city of Palm Coast staff, parks and recreation, the incredible volunteers for the Palm Coast Little League event that was held. Opening ceremonies on Friday were great. We were able to even persuade the governor to come through the opening pitch. I thought that was a great example, and tremendous example of how the weather can cooperate for an event in Palm Coast. It was great to see all those out-of-towners in our city. It's great to see heads in beds. That's the type of half-cent sales tax that we're talking about, where we get these external activities and events that come to our city. They seem to have thrived, and I'm happy to see that everything went off without a hitch. So my praise to the city staff and everyone who attended that. My other comment would be, as we move forward through this budgeting process, I again urge my fellow councilmen to come back with items and ideas and conceptual paths forward to achieve the mileage rate that we're looking to, you know, codify. If we're going to get to a number, then we need to be able to draw our path there, and we need to be able to get to a decision in consensus and be able to discuss it amongst us, so that we understand how we're going to get there. With that being said, I just, I hope that everyone is getting out and they vote in this election, and that is all, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Rosa.
We have a lot of countries out there right now fighting for their freedom, and just a reminder, not to take ours for granted. Go out and vote.
That's it?
That's it.
How about you?
You know.
Have anything else?
Nope.
Well, we have a couple things to add here. One is to say to the family, my good friend Paulo Capella, that passed away a day before yesterday, only he's 45 years old.
Wow.
Rest in peace. Something else is, I, once again, our governor, great guy, to be honest with you. I saw the way he was treating those kids. This visitor, this visit from the governor was phenomenal, what he did. I didn't have the chance to speak with him, but you want to know something? More and more, I like this guy for his attitude, and especially the way he treated those kids. This visitor was phenomenal. I didn't like his last visit, that happened about, maybe in May, when he came to town, and he apparently told Melissa Holland that if she didn't quit, he was going to bring her some criminal charges. And then, not happy with that, nonchalantly, I believed that he went to Flagler Beach and had lunch at the restaurant where Melissa Holland's daughter was working as a waitress. Having that said, I don't think I have anything else to say, and I'll answer the motion for adjourn.
Mr. Mayor, we still have-
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought I was the last good thing in this front. Okay. Mr., discussion by city attorney on matters not on the agenda.
After that lead-up, I have no report.
Good. About discussion by the city manager, matters not on the agenda?
Yes, as part of my item, we have a reporting of emergency and sole-source purchases, and just, it's included in your packet. If you have any questions, now is the time to ask those, but otherwise, I have nothing.
I don't. Anybody else have any questions regarding this?
No, they don't.
Move to adjourn.
I'm meeting adjourned.